Agenda is an invocation. We welcome Pastor Caleb Lawson from Bethel Church to lead us in that.
Almighty God, thank you for this opportunity to gather here tonight and to discuss this business of the city of Fergus Falls. I pray that you bless this community. I pray that you bless and give wisdom to these council members. I pray that you show your favor to this meeting and to our community, and we ask all of these things in your mighty name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is called to order, followed by the roll call.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. The first item is open forum. If anybody cares to come to the podium to talk about anything that is not on the agenda, state your name and the city in which you live. With nobody, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. We have one item, item number four on the consent agenda, which Councilmember Kwame has asked to be removed. Is there any other changes to your knowledge, Mr. Administrator? With that, do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the one just...
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you, Laura. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Hitting none, the agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda is public hearings, of which there are none. And then the following item is the awarding of bids. Resolution, accepting funding agreement 1060425 between the city of Fergus Falls and MinDOT for CP9776, the Otter Tail Valley Rail Signal Replacement Project, followed by a second resolution on the similar kind of project. A resolution awarding the construction service contract base bid plus alternates 1-2 to Tyzac Concrete LLC in the amount of $458,929.66 for said CP9776, the Otter Tail Valley Rail Signal Replacement. With that, I will ask Grant from Bolton and Mink to talk about said projects.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. As Mayor Hicks mentioned, I'm here today to discuss the Otter Tail Valley Rail project. Three bids were received and publicly opened on May 23, 2025 at 2:00 PM. The apparent low bidder for the project was Tyzac Concrete of La Center, Minnesota, with a total base bid amount, and that's a base bid plus alternates 1 and 2, in the amount of $458,929.66. The estimated probable construction cost was $511,195.28. Good favorable bid coming in. We've evaluated the bids and determined Tyzac Concrete's bid was in order and responsive. From a budget standpoint, Bolton and Mink and the city attorney have reviewed MinDOT's funding reimbursement agreement, which they are participating above that base bid, which we, city administrator, Mr. Andrew Bremseth and I met with MinDOT, and we were very pleased that they went above the base bid plus alternates 1 and 2 to essentially fund a portion of the contingency as well. So they're offering a lump sum amount of $500,000 that will fully pay for the construction costs of the project and fund a portion of the contingency. And so essentially, if we use $475,000, the city would get to pocket that extra $25,000 and use as you see fit. Any questions for me regarding the funding agreement and/or the construction services contract this evening?
If we can get a resolution of...
I'll offer that. I'll second it.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Laurel. Any questions of Grant at this point in time?
I would commend the people who work with the state of Minnesota to get this thing covered. It's the best thing I heard. Thank you.
Anything else? Maybe we can vote on that now? Roll call?
Yes.
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 I'm coming. Sorry. I heard her say Rachel. What?
Yes.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. The second, obviously, part of this was the awarding of the service contract. So we'd need a...
I want a question. Grant, is it the alternates? What were the alternates on it? How much were they?
So the alternates were to... We didn't do all four intersections at one time in the base bid. So we just had Mill Street and Cascade were the base bid, and then Summit and Freiberg were alternates, just because we didn't know how bids would come in and what funding was available from MinDOT. So we didn't want to have to bid it out multiple times, so we had those as alternates. They have the money available for us, and so alternates 1 and 2 are those.
With that, would somebody care to make the resolution for the construction bid contract?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Scott. Would somebody care to second it?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Laura. Roll call.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. There are no petitions and communications. The next items are the consent agenda. Item 1 is the motion approving the minutes of the June 2, 25, city council meeting and work session, and the June 11, 2025 committee of the hall, a motion approving licenses. And then a resolution approving a bond finance plan resolution for Junius and Shoreview Projects. Item 4 has been removed for further discussion. Would somebody care to make that resolution?
I'll offer that. I can second it.
Thank you, Laurel. Roll call.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. The next item is a motion directing the city attorney to draft ordinance amendments to City Code Chapter 154, standalone accessory structures. Councilmember Kwame?
Thank you. When we discussed this at our meeting last Wednesday, the planning commission report essentially said not to change the current ordinance language, and the conversation amongst the council was apparently indicating some interest in changing the language of the ordinance. So done a little more studying on this, done a little more thinking on this, and my position on this is I believe that we should agree with the planning commission's recommendation and not change the ordinance. The phrase that I heard come up several times from the other council members here was that on a case-by-case basis, we need to be able to look at these unusual circumstances on a case-by-case basis. And I think that that was the significant piece of this puzzle. If we've got a lot that in one... There was one example given of a relatively small lot that's on the city limit bordering the county. Because of the setbacks and whatnot, it would have been a difficult lot on which to build a home. So in a circumstance like that, maybe it's best to look at a conditional use permit or a variance or whatever it would take for that specific case to be dealt with. But I think to change the ordinance across the board to allow for those kinds of unusual things is opening us up to other issues that I think are just too problematic. When the planning commission submitted their report, one of the quotes I'd like to read is, "They most consistently express concern that standalone garages may detract from the character of the neighborhood and limit opportunities for residential development." Another comment that was made in our conversation on Wednesday from Commissioner Kremeyer was an example given over by the Dairy Queen neighborhood over in that end of town of a home that was started back at least 50 years ago. Built as a basement, a roof put over it, the idea that eventually a home would be built there. It's still a basement. The kinds of things that can happen if you allow a garage to be built because it's someday they're going to build a house, well, maybe someday never happens, and that garage is just a garage forever. Maybe that garage turns into somebody's little business, and now this residential neighborhood has got a manufacturing company operating out of some garage. I think there's lots of ways that this changing of the ordinance that's been suggested could be the wrong direction to go, and so I would speak against changing the motion, or changing the ordinance and even going forward with this motion. I'm not going to make the motion to go forward with it. If somebody else does and it dies for lack of a second, then we're done, and we can have some further direction as to whether we want to pursue what it would take to... Or suggest a method for addressing things like variances and exceptions to this ordinance or any ordinance, because we'll have things that'll come up, and maybe we need a better way to allow for these case-by-case situations, but not to just wholesale change ordinances for specific unusual case-by-case situations.
Your Honor, would somebody care to make the motion?
Well, I got a comment.
I think we need a motion on the table, so we can either vote it up or down.
I'll offer the motion.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Laurel. Scott?
I just, I wasn't here on... I apologize I wasn't here on Wednesday, but I've had a lot of questions on these talk to me about doing this, and I like the idea of the conditional use permit to be case-by-case, because there's a lot of these places in town already. And we've talked about this probably seven, eight years ago, I think, and I think that'd be a good way to change it up. And I think it's on the edge of town or something like that, or a neighborhood where it's, a house isn't going to be built, or, you know, where it would fit in. So that's, I agree with Scott completely. I won't vote for this unless there's a conditional use permit in it.
I think this is just to send it to the city attorney to draft the ordinance, and then the ordinance would come back in front of the council, and then the council could obviously go, has the opportunity to go through it and make, you know, corrections or additions, deletions, as the council then sees fit. So at this stage, it's just... The request this evening is to send it to the city attorney to draft changes. I think what Councilmember Kwame is suggesting is that we would actually not do that.
Your Honor, I would speak in favor of this. I understand that there are concerns. I don't think that we're... We don't have as many infill lots to do this. Like, I don't think every block is going to have a garage standalone on it. So I think this might, we might be making a bigger issue of this than it is, is, would be my hope. I think that there are legitimate reasons to allow this to happen, so I would be in favor of moving this forward and some ordinance change, albeit conditional use or whatever is recommended, but I think we should look at it.
Al?
I would agree with that, too. I think as I drive around town and look at different neighborhoods, there's a lot more yards out there that aren't mowed, and there's some houses you can't even see from the road. And here's some people who want to put a garage or some type of structure up that we can collect some property tax on. And I would think if they're willing to do that, they're going to, they're going to keep it up instead of having a vacant lot that's full of grass. And there is a lot of them in town. I don't know if you folks have driven around lately or not, but I have. It is amazing. Some of the foliage that's out there in these lots and in these houses. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, a couple of the lots that have been approached by constituents are smaller than what the current ordinance says a house could fit on. I think the ordinance says 60-foot front. Some of these lots are 55. So we've got disparity, disparity between these policies. So again, I'm not pleased with the planning commission coming forward with this. I think previously we've had council members say that this has been a subject for 10 years and should be acted on, and it needs to be addressed. We've heard it from the public many times that, hey, it's a garage. We had one person on the edge of town put $100,000 in a building outside of the city. We're missing an opportunity for these smaller lots. I stand in favor of this, and I will help our attorney work on this.
Any other questions? If not, the motion on the table is to direct the city attorney to draft ordinance amendments to the City Code Chapter 154 regarding standalone accessory structures. So I think all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign.
Aye.
So I think the motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is ordinance and resolutions, the second reading of ordinance 67, 8th series, amending City Code 91.52 chicken permits. And if you recall, this was basically taking out the maximum number of chicken coops or licenses that permits that the city has. There's been, obviously, a steady increase in people wishing to house chickens to make eggs so that they are cheaper than in the store, and we haven't had issues so far. So this is a second reading, so it would be a roll call.
Yes.
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 Oh, we just plucked that one out there.
Here we go.
The next item is...
Much easier this time than the first time around, I'll tell you.
Yes, it was.
There was a lot of discussion when we first put that ordinance in.
Yeah. It was foul at that point, so... The second reading of ordinance 68, 8th series, Police Department, and this was removing the emergency management from the Police Department and moving it to the Fire Department. So this, again, would be a roll call.
Yes.
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 Thank you. The reading is approved. The next item on the agenda is the presentation of claims in the amount of $1,749,468.85. Would somebody care to make that resolution?
I can do that.
Thank you, Laurel. Would somebody care to second it? Laura, come on.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Laura, roll call.
Yes.
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 There is no old or unfinished business, no new business. The next item on the agenda is council comments, so...
Your Honor, before we go there, could I have a vote on the consent agenda for who voted in favor and who voted against it?
On what?
For, under the consent agreement on the...
Oh, number four? I think it was Scott Kwame and Scott Rachel that voted against it.
Is that correct?
It's true for me.
Yeah. So...
Thank you.
Thank you. The council comments start with Councilmember Kildee.
I just have a couple of things. First of all, thank you to Guy Taylor and his department for doing some cleanup on a property in the fourth ward that badly needed it and has made neighbors very happy today. So I heard from neighbors this morning, and they are very appreciative, so thank you for getting that taken care of. It was necessary. The second thing I want to talk about is, and I have posters if anyone wants them, there's a benefit coming up next Tuesday night for the New Live family, and Chad is going through some medical-related things that are very serious. And the reason I bring this up is because their daughter is a lifeguard at our community pool, and their wife, and his wife Beth, has been our head records technician over at the Police Department for over 20 years. And so it is my hope that this community and the city staff, and which I know are supporting this, and the members of Fergus Falls come out to support this family. It's at Augustana Church next Tuesday night. It's going to be a bratton hot dog feed and silent auction, and we really hope that people can support this, and especially being that we have two staff members for the city of Fergus Falls, that this directly impacts. It would be great to see everybody.
Thank you. Jim?
I want to talk a little bit about Pebble Lake. I'm getting some complaints about the height of the water washing away the shore. And my understanding is that last year the outlet was plugged by a beaver dam, and that dam was removed, but it's still somewhat plugged, and the people out there would like to see that outlet opened up more than what it is right now, because the water is quite hot.
We need sunshine, Jim. Evaporation.
I'll tell you what, I went through some rain today that is not going to help.
Yep. Guy, did you want to touch base on that?
Sure. Thanks for bringing that up, Mr. Fish. So the ditch that does drain Pebble Lake had a beaver dam last fall. We were given permission to clean the beaver dam up, but beyond the beaver dam, the ditch is also full of cattails and other water vegetation. That we don't have permission to clean out, so we've got to work through a process to get that permission. The other piece of that lake level is the pump. There was a failure of the pump that we just discovered this spring when we were going to put it in. That was just delivered back to us today repaired, and it will go in hopefully late this week and start lowering that level.
Who do we need permission from to take the cattails and stuff out?
That's a good question. It's DNR, DOT, U.S. Fish and Wildlife. You want a few more? Yeah, it's complicated.
Thank you.
The pump will help.
Thank you, then.
If we can get that hooked up and get it right.
It will, yeah. And that, with the force of that pumping, it could clear some of that out, too.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Laura?
Well, I had a great meeting today with Visit Fergus Falls. We did our monthly meeting, and I wanted to just kind of show everybody the Fergus Falls Super Summer Savings Card that you're going to be able to find in other businesses and the hotels. There is a QR code on here, so the different savings can change when, from what's printed to on that QR code. They can change it. Businesses can change. So this is a great little thing to have. It's got a lot of different savings in there. The second piece is they also launched itineraries on their website. So if you go to Visit Fergus Falls, you're going to see, check our itineraries, and that's going to pop up to, I think there's four itineraries. There may be more on there. So check out their website, check out the itineraries, and I appreciate the good work that they're really doing in conjunction with the chamber. So it was great. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Scott?
Next week, from Wednesday through Friday, is the League of Minnesota Cities' Summer Convention in Duluth. I'll be attending that along with several members of the staff. As I understand it, Anthony Hicks is going to be there. Andrew Bremseth will be there. Clara, are you going, too? Okay. I don't know if you'll be there, too, as well, Kyle? Terrific. These are always very helpful and educational events, not only for the presentations in the various breakout sessions and the typical kind of convention meetings that happen, but also in just being able to sit at a table with other council people and other mayors and other people from the administration of other cities to hear about how they do things. And in previous conventions like this that I've attended, you know, I've been able to talk to some of the administrators and the mayors from, you know, Benson, Wilmer, Morris, Rochester, Duluth, these other towns that are also represented there. I found it to be very helpful, very educational, and very much worth the time. And then there's also an exhibit hall vendor situation that is a part of these conventions. And each of the times that I go, I'm never able to get through the entire thing. It's a three-hour or four-hour window, and I'll get through as many as I can, talking to the different vendors that have got their things to show and tell. And I just find it to be very helpful, very educational, and very productive, and I'm glad that several of our staff will be there with me next week.
Thank you, Scott. Mark?
Since we beat up the garage thing a little bit tonight, I'll move on. I was elected and wanted to update the, if you will, the agenda on a rotating basis. Updates on, obviously, we're already working on the TIF, an update on Lake Alice, an update on the Community Ice Arena, an update on the naming rights of the various parks that we have, update from the airport, update on the dairy property. Bill and I are working on the capital improvement plans. A big thing I'm hearing, too, is a public call log or a public email. I understand that there are people contacting the city one way or the other, and it's not coming in front of the council. If there were a call log, we really don't need to know who that person was, but by subject, it should come in front of the council. Department reports, I thought that last one at Lynn Head was wonderful. I think that should be rotated. Staten property update. We continue to talk about various contracts. I'd like to look at all the contracts that are coming up, be it an RFP or a review, be it the league, street monitoring, biking, what have you, and readdress the committee duties and responsibilities. You know, we've got 10, 12 committees that I think should be reevaluated. And an update on the Daily Journal. Thank you very much.
I think on the Daily Journal, I don't think anything has changed.
June 23 is the court hearing.
June?
June 23.
23.
And that's to talk to the judge about schedule.
But again, it's just an update of the council agenda, and leave them open. If there's no activity, there's no activity. But I think we're losing track of some of these older items that we forget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Al?
I would just like to make some comments as far as, first of all, thanks to all of those of you who were involved with Summerfest, the committee, city staff that worked so hard on that. You know, it looked like it was going to be a kind of a wet weekend, but it turned out perfect. So it was nice to see that. Kind of getting back a little bit to what I said earlier. And these events in this town are very important, you know, be it Summerfest, be it the car show out at the old Kmart building and parking lot there. These are very important to this city. And when we get people that come into this city... I grew up here. I have a very fondness for this city and the way it looks. When I see places that are unkept and, you know, that needs to be taken care of, because it's an embarrassment to our city. And if somebody wants to come here and live or invest in our community, it doesn't shine a good light for those who have worked so hard to make this a really attractive area to live in. And I don't know if we need to look at some of the rental properties or the, some of the landlords need to be talked to or who they are, but I think we need to really look into that, because it does kind of throw a pall over our community when we drive through and you see things like that. People are going to wonder, why is that like that? Why does the city allow this? So there again, if somebody's going to invest, you know, $100,000 in a building, they're going to take care of that property and, or even $50,000 or $30,000. You know, that's an investment. So, you know, that kind of goes back to the buildings. But I really would like to see some more enforcement on the way our city looks. Thank you.
I think there is an ordinance on that, Al. But I would agree, there's a property on Lincoln that's got a Northern Lawn Care sign in the yard, and it's not been mowed for a long time, and the other...
The lawn is taller than the sign.
And the other, the other property, believe it or not, is actually the post office. The post office is looking really rough, and that's a...
That was also another point. I'd really like, I brought it up once about the sandbags on the steps. I mean, it's one of the most beautiful buildings in the city.
No, the actual post office.
Well, the other one. Well, I'm talking about the other one downtown, the courthouse.
Yeah.
The grass is like this out there.
Yeah. So we should send Uncle Sam a kind of a, you know, mow your lawn or we're going to cut it for you. So with that, thank you. Mike?
Your Honor, I'm going to take a little different tone, and I don't want to take a somber tone, but we watched something happen in the state of Minnesota this week that was absolutely unacceptable to some of our state lawmakers. And I doubt that anybody in this room or anybody watching today, especially on this council, could say anything otherwise to that. It was shocking. And I sat there, and the first things that came to mind for me is I thought about Senator Rasmussen was my first thought, and then I thought about Representative Backer. And then I started to sit there for a minute, and I started to think about myself. This is the first time in my life I've ever been a politician or somebody that makes decisions for a government entity. decisions for a government entity, and I thought, wow, this is different. This is different. So I want the council, if they would, to show our honor and solidarity for those lawmakers that were killed and the husband and shot this week, and I'd like our city to just take a moment of silence, maybe five seconds of silence, just to show that the city of Fergus Falls is with you, the individuals on this council are with you, the city is with you, and this should have never happened if that's all right, Your Honor.
No, that is perfectly fine. I was going to say something, but you stole my thunder, but that's not... No, I think you're absolutely right. We all do this, and we do it because we care, and we shouldn't have the fear that somebody's going to break into our home and take not only our life but the life of our partner. And I think, as you say, it was a big tragedy, you know, and not something that Minnesota should be proud of in any way, shape, or form. So I will honor you, your period of silence. Do you want to do that now, or would you like Scott to go and then do it?
It's up to you, Your Honor.
I think we'll do it after Scott. Thank you.
That should be quick. I just want to... Al was talking about Summerfest, and this is the first year I've been out there since probably three years, and the Summerfest committee does a... You know, the staff does a great job, but that committee really works hard at getting everything done, and we should be really thankful that they have a... They've really put the time in, and Friday night wasn't that great of a night, but Saturday was a... There's cars everywhere up there, and I went to the parade, and I kind of walked around, and there was more people there than I've ever seen in a long time, and more candy than you can ever... The streets still had candy on it after the parade. Kids didn't pick it all up, so it was really good. And of course, I agree with Mr. Mortensen. What we went through this last weekend, I don't remember where I was at when I got... I didn't know nothing about it, and I sat down and thought about how easy this could happen to any of us, and so we should just be thankful for what we have and keep our eyes open.
I think with that, we'll do a minute of silence. in. With that, we have some miscellaneous announcements. Most city facilities are closed for observation of Juneteenth this coming Thursday. Garbage and recycling that would normally be picked up on Thursday will be moved to the Wednesday, the 18th. Friday collection will remain unchanged. June 30 is the first of the series of town hall meetings. It's been posted as a quorum of council members, so there is no limit to how many council members can participate. July 4 is a holiday closure for Observation of Independence Day. Garbage and recycling normally picked up on Friday is moved to Thursday. The third and Thursday's collection will be picked up on Wednesday, the 2nd. July 7 is a 5:30 council meeting. We will be going into an adjournment to a closed meeting to consider a potential real estate transaction for 925 Western Avenue as allowed by Minnesota Statute 13D.05. The council will return to an open meeting post that. With that, we would ask, obviously, members of the public to depart.